Put your hands together for ACHD Production.
We're ready.
Yeah.
We're ready. Good afternoon, ACHD Production, Richard Brothers, Don Scott. Just getting ready to have a good time in the night. Are you ready?
AC Funtimes Superstar brings you a special from St. Peter's AME Church hosted by Joe Madison, The Black Eagle. This is a town hall meeting.
African American, in fact, John Condis is the dean of the United States House of Representatives, the longest serving member. He's African American, from Detroit. John Condis has introduced, and I'm one of the co-sponsors of legislation, to once and for all bring an end to profiling, not just racial profiling, but gay, community, women, all of these areas where we've seen profiling take place. That was introduced last week, and I think there's gonna be a favorable response. You know, we've been trying to bring an end to racial profiling for a long, long time. That's the first reaction. A second reaction has been, legislation has been proposed to do what Senator Kempson has tried to do here at the state level, and that is to mandate what we call body cameras. Now, that's not a panacea, as far as I'm concerned. I'm really very clear that that might be a step in the right direction, but we're on a thousand mile journey here, and that's just one step.
And let me ask, do you have, with the legis-- I'm over here. Do you have, I'm sorry, with the legislation, do you have bipartisan support? Do you think you have bipartisan support? Because that's the big issue now in Washington.
Let me put it this way. There is bipartisan talk. I'm waiting for some bipartisan walk.
But I think that they plan to draw out this until they hope that it goes away, and that's where we have to be, is we can't let this fade away. We have to be in the streets and open that this is not gonna fade away. We can be in the streets responsibly, but we can't let this fade away. We've gotta be in the streets. And the only difference is, is the way that the situation is handled, and also militarized police force. But I don't think it's fair to say that Baltimore was handled wrongly from an outside's perspective looking in. You have to be in Baltimore to know what happened in Baltimore.
Well, that's what Condis said, was the young man mentioned, before I go to the next question here in the audience, the young man mentioned staying in the streets, that how important it is. And he said, you know, and do it in a responsible manner. You've been very instrumental in pulling different groups together as a community activist, you're a businesswoman in this community. Your response to what the young man said just a minute ago?
I totally agree with him. That's exactly what needs to happen. We cannot allow this to fade away, because if we do that, then the killings are gonna continue. I also ask each and every one of you that's here, if you're not registered to vote, that's your voice. And, you know, we have someone here with 200 forms, 200 applications right now, so you have no excuse. And those of us that are registered to vote, we gotta come out and vote. You cannot sit at home and expect your voice to be heard, and then when the wrong people get in place, you're upset. You have no space to do that.
Well, we learned that in Ferguson. I think they, I mentioned, they increased their city council representation by African Americans threefold. They just hired, fired and hired a new city manager, who's got to hire a new chief of police, and that's what you're talking about. They now have the power and the control, and I think they have to judge us also. You have a question, your name?
I want your response. I'm sorry, sir. Lambis Singletary, 50-year resident in North Charleston. The difference, I think, with Baltimore versus Charleston, we're riding, riding in Baltimore tonight, but if you can remember, the initial response by our leadership was not the same response that occurred after that video came out. The initial response, and I think people in Baltimore are frustrated at all blacks across the country, because the way that it's done, we know it's not right. The initial response from our leadership, in terms of administration for the city of North Charleston, was in support of all the enslaved. However, when the video came out, it was so blatant, it was on six o'clock news when we saw the killing. Then, then the administration came into fold, and the only thing they could do was to charge him with the crime for murder. But the initial thing was not, was not to give a checkmark off to our leadership or administration for the city of North Charleston, because initially, they were in support of slavery. I think the difference is the fact that because of the video, we know now that justice has to come. Baltimore is frustrated because there's so many things in the past, we don't get justice, and that's, that's--
But let me, but let me bring up this thing so many in the past. Look, you know, one of the things that we've been picking up, and I'll ask anyone from the panel to discuss this, is that this is not new. I mean, I've had people call the show from North Charleston and said, any Saturday night, you can be going down the main drag, and you pulled over for this, or you pulled over for that, but this is, this is not, not new. I, I, you know, since we haven't heard from the state, let me take State Senator Gibson, and thank you so much, because I know you've got some state legislative things, and it might address what he's talking about. So please, and then I'll go to the back.
Let me thank you, Joe, and let me say to the young man that articulated the difference, the young man who just spoke, is the difference is the video. Cal up there is wearing a shirt, "Do You Believe Us Now?" And if you look at the narrative across this country, it's the same narrative in the police officer's statements. The police officers write self-serving declarations. In other words, they, they tell the story from their viewpoint. And unfortunately, in a courtroom, greater weight is often afforded the police officer. Now, I know that there are some people, and I agree, body cameras aren't the total solution, but it's a start. And Representative Wendell Gilliard and I filed legislation requiring a mandate on all police officers to wear body cameras before the Walter Scott shooting. We held three Senate hearings. We barely had any community participate. It mainly was attended by law enforcement. But I'm pleased to say, in the state of South Carolina, if you want to pass legislation, you have to get bipartisan support.
So the question is, do you have bipartisan support?
We have bipartisan support, and it's on the second reading in the Senate floor.
Explain what that means.
It has to be read three times. The most substantive discussions occur on second reading. We can read it tomorrow, have a dialogue, and it can get to the House.
So we won't wait like Loretta Lynch did, right?
I'm not in Congress. I'm not in Congress.
Right. You got control of this one, right?
And so we are doing what we can, but let me also say this, Joe.
Yes.
The, the, it's, the investigation still has not commenced with respect to Officer Habersham. And that is the second officer who, after reviewing his statement, left out material information, and the co-conspirator of crime can just be as guilty as the person.
How many of you think that the, the officer's name--
Habersham should be arrested?
And, okay, I'll get to that. You gotta, there are people, this is one of the great things about radio, you're holding up signs, and radio signs don't play in radio. Let me go to the back here.
Yes, good afternoon. Pastor Dixon here with the Coalition Keep United to Take Back Our Community. And one of the things I want to say is that as far as reporting these type of incidences and trying to get into the mind of the police departments lawfully, we've been doing this for years. We've been telling our position from a black perspective, from a minority's perspective, from a poor people's perspective, about racial profiling, about police brutality. But see, that was falling on deaf ears prior to the Walter Scott shooting.
What do you think made a difference?
In--
What made a difference now?
Yeah. I mean, you've been, and you're right, it's been going on, you've been at it for years.
The obvious presentation of video that does not lie. That's one thing. But as of right now, though, I believe that North Charleston City Hall is falling back to its old habits of confusion and lack of transparency. Because following the video, which really, that's what, that's what they're gonna call me here, the release of the video. Doubt brings confusion. People in doubt for three days was revealing as far as their animosity and intentions. But once the video was released, it quieted. What the mayor did, and I've heard a lot of people, pat the man on the back, the man did what he had to do. Anything other than that, we might need to be standing in that corner. But to prove what I'm saying about this transparency thing, two days later, there was a, a, a city hall meeting, a special press conference or whatever, that was really a quite hostile situation. Why? Because the mayor stepped back into his old mode of lack of transparency and smoking mirrors and carrying on, and the people that were in the room got angry about it again. Now, fortunately, though, because we have a community that listens to its leaders, its leaders are saying, let's not step out there, let's not get, let's not be a Baltimore Ferguson here. Let's wait. But see, we're at that point right now, though, the waiting is over. There needs to be a dialogue, as you suggested, in City Hall, and respected dialogue, coming from the position where we come from, not, not setting policy and procedure--
Not, not talk down to the bottom of--
Exactly, exactly. So that's, that's what we're headed at. We are united now, probably about 20 different organizations together now, that are working towards something, and Muja Dean alluded to it already, Monday, four o'clock in front of North Charleston City Hall, we're gonna have one of the largest mass rallies out here--
Now, this will be, this is--
The anniversary of the murder of Walter Scott.
All right. Let me take this, Stephen.
The legislation you was talking about, I think with the body camera, it needs to go a little further. As a veteran, okay, we all see, we got veterans, three, four, five deployments in Iraq and Afghanistan, coming back with serious psychological issues. We need to have more stringent testing and evaluation of these victims.
That's a good idea. But to look at that video as a veteran, and see that officer brought down on that man with no depravity, okay, there's PTSD going on with this situation here. And a lot of these officers need to be evaluated and tested, and that needs to be done annually, annually.
In fact, I've heard that suggestion before. Many, many police officer departments make at intake psychological evaluations a part of being hired. So I, I fully agree. As the congressman stated, there are so many other issues that need to be addressed other than body cameras. We are at the end of session. We had this bill prefiled, and I'm optimistic that we'll get a bill done. But further, the issue of child support is another major issue that this congressman asked me to look in. We have too many African-American men being locked up who are simply unable to pay their child-supported obligations, their fear to come out of the house, they, they, they can't, unfortunately, they, they can't, they had their driver's license revoked. And so the whole issue of child support that is incarcerating our young African-American male needs to be examined as well in, in the state of South Carolina.
We are all over the Low Country. If you wanna be a guest on the show, call us at 843-200-4487. If you've got talent, you need to email author.chisham@at&amp;t.net. Or you can go to Facebook, and Facebook, Arthur Chisholm. And that's Arthur Chisholm, he'll be riding a white horse. Or you can visit us at www.tifm.ws.
We need people not when celebrities come in town to be to all these meetings. I mean, it's so like school board meetings everywhere. We need people all the time, not when it's for the last meeting. I mean, listen, we got to do, we got to change the situation. We got a man, and his whole family runs this town. If it wasn't for that video, he said we don't need no practice on the back at all. Because he would do, and he says about what he would do if he was a police officer. So I say to each of you, don't say that it don't involve me, I don't have a child in school, I don't have to go to community leaders, they're tearing down our black communities, the black ones are killing each other, there's no standards, there's nothing for the children to do. We can make a difference. So we need to come together, not sometimes, all the time. I had my eighth neck surgery, but guess what? Nothing stops me. I go to all meetings. And for the panel up here, one person is listening that's very hardworking, that I work with all the time, Reverend Johnson. I mean, he is on every murder case, he's everywhere. And when something happens, I'll call him and see if he knows it. But to each of you in here, it's not about us, it's about our future. And the way things are going right now, our future is very slim. We got young kids coming up. Think about it. Come to these meetings, find out where they are. When the community is getting cut down, they already know it. The other people in the meeting, they know what's going on, and we know last minute. And then we wanna complain about it. We cannot do that. We can't sit home. So I say to each of you, come out to these meetings, and we can help stop someone with a police officer and a mayor. Thank you.
Quite honestly, the interfaith community has not come together as it should. And there are about three things that really need to be done. One, whether it be the church, the mosque, or even the synagogue, we need to go back to our original role as community advocates for those who cannot or will not speak up. Second thing is, we have to stop looking, we have to start looking beyond worship, because you can shout all day Sunday and not share anything. We have to be, we have to be active in the communities, we have to reach out to our young people instead of looking down on them or judging them, work with them and respect their abilities, because they have gifts that some of us don't have. And then thirdly, those of us who call ourselves clergy, have to stop worrying about being rock stars. We have to-- We have to speak truth to power, we have to talk about the importance of voting and registering to vote. And we have to make sure that we don't have one face when the camera's rolling and another face when the camera's off. We have to break our habit sometimes of going along with the powers that be to get along, because when you do that, you forsake your faith. The church ought to be able to bark whenever need be, but it's very hard to bark if you chew in on a bone. So we have to--
Minister Mohammed, the Nation of Islam, and we talked earlier before the program started, and you have Christian, Muslim groups working together, talk to me about what you did in North Charleston, or what you didn't do, or what you would like to see done as, as you move forward.
Well, I would like to say what needs to be done is to first recognize that we have a challenge here of two mindsets. From a historical perspective, we have had a challenge between two mindsets, white supremacy and black inferiority. When we look at the systematic process, not only in police departments, but in educational institutions, political institutions, it's all designed for the destruction of us as a people. So as interfaith communities, we must organize and galvanize for the need of empowering our people, not just to depend on the system to do for us what we're not willing to do for ourselves. We, we have to hold the mayor accountable, we have to hold the police department accountable, but we have to lock arms, look from within, to start teaching our babies, start developing systems. If we have a problem with the police department, then why should we not organize in defense for ourselves to control our own community, to minimize the need of a police presence within the black community? But our community now has become a sanctuary for crime, where it has been safe for drugs to be there, has been safe for prostitution to be there. So when we look at law enforcement from a historical perspective, it's all about containment of crime within the black community, but they don't patrol downtown or the bad that they patrol, the east side, the west side, maybe here. So what we have to do is to organize and say enough is enough. So we have to understand that if we get ourselves together, pool our resources, develop systems of education, develop systems of information, then we can have power from within, and we won't have a master-slave relationship, but we'll be masters dealing with another master in a bound situation. This is what we have to do for our children, this is what we have to do for our people, empower them from within, that we can empower ourselves to overcome any force from without.
We have a notorious apartment complex. They sold drugs in and out of that apartment, like the Water Company ran water. And it was the Nation of Islam, and the fruit of Islam, that went in, organized, and stopped the drug sale. Absolutely stopped it cold. And so as you were talking, I thought about that, and that had to be maybe 10, 15 years ago that, that, that happened. So I, I wanted to say that, because I don't want people to misinterpret or not understand what he was saying. You, you have orange hats. We, you remember, you guys remember orange hats? These, these used to be neighborhood people would wear orange hats, and they'd control, am I right, Mrs. Brown? Well, they would control their own, their own communities. You don't see them anymore. But your name was mentioned, Reverend Johnson, and I just found the National Action Network, and I, let's move away from it. So I wanted to get your response to what you heard.
Well, as I mentioned the name, I would like for them to stand, because this is the face of Charleston, been fighting for over 20 something years in this community. You got a lot of preachers down here on the front row, you don't see them, you don't hear nothing from them. Mrs. Dot Scott, which city of Charleston, NSCP, stands. Pastor Dixon, who stands. North Charleston, NSCP, the crime, who stands. These are the leaders of North Charleston, have been fighting this, and, and, and Brother Mohammed, have been fighting this discrimination and racism for over 20 something years. So when we called for calm in the community, they didn't happen. The people listened to what we had to say. Because we wanted to, before they react, we wanted them to wait until the investigation's over with. But we already knew the same day that there was a video out there, that there were a video, because it was circulating in, in the pawn shop, that there were a video that the young man had taken.
Wait, 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 wait. Circulating in the pawn shop?
Guys in the pawn shop knew that the young man had already took in the video the same day he was shot, because it brought it to my attention, the young man was shot, it was brought to my attention, that there were a video out there. Muja Dean came to me wanting to know the family's, the family's telephone number, in which I already had communicated.
Speak, speak to that, if you don't mind.
Sure. The importance of Black Lives Matter is that we create an accountability mechanism that the community can use to understand where we need to go to get some stuff done. So the brother, Finn Santana, contacted me that night, showed the video. In the morning, we found the family at the memorial, brought them in, they saw the video, and we got things moving. That's the level of accuracy and responsiveness that we need at a ground level. So as we're asking for a citizens' review board, we're giving ourselves an accountability system that we have to have power with power. If we have subpoena power, we can ask an officer to be summoned to court to say, hey buddy, you've been messing around profiling and harassing folks in this community, answer for that. And slaying had that, that would have been over.
You want, you want a citizens' review board with, well, listen, with subpoena power?
That's right.
Because there are a lot of citizen review boards. Go ahead, Miss Brown, you can respond to that.
Yes, that's important to have, a citizen review board with subpoena powers, because without the powers, then what do you do? Who are we? We're no one.
You're just a paper tiger, in essence, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But let me ask, let me ask, Marla, State Senator, let me ask you, what would that take legislatively, public policy? How does one get that? It's one thing asking and demanding. I know you've got an election year, but how do you get it? How would they vote? What would be the process?
I don't know. I haven't been asked that question, but I, I'm assuming it would have to start at the North Charleston city level. And so you have a number of city council representatives that you should start with, with that inquiry, because they should have the power to adopt local rules, policies, and ordinances--
Would it be a ballot?
Specific to, specific to the city of North Charleston.
Would it be, you think it would be a ballot measure? Would, would that be--
It'd be an ordinance.
An ordinance?
Yeah, a North Charleston city ordinance or Charleston city ordinance. Now, I will say this, I think the governor, a couple days ago, called very forcefully for there to be state legislation to mandate anytime there's a police shooting, no matter where, that is turned over to slay immediately. The problem we've got now, there are some police departments that are policing themselves on this question. And so I think that's another piece of legislation that we ought to be pushing.
All right. Now, is there a councilman, Councilman Brown? Wait, wait, you never know who's listening to the Madison Show, you never know who shows up at the town hall meeting. We just have to talk about it. Where is the councilman?
I'm here.
Oh, please, stand up, sir. If you, I just asked this question. How would it, one, I don't know what your position would be on it, come on out here to this. And, yeah, and so your response to this need for a, a citizens' review board with teeth, with, with the, how would they go about it?
I think you asked the right question. The point, it has to be dialogue first, start off with. The next part you said is, what's the legislation, is something to behold? You asked Senator, Aunt Kempson, which is an attorney, a lawyer. I think all those processes has to be going through and discussed and figure out what is best and how it works. I think it's a great concept to think about, but now following you with the process.
Would you be willing to introduce an ordinance to, to, to do this?
I'd be willing to discuss and see what all the ordinance move forward. There was saying, there was saying, yes, subpoena power, but what does that subpoena power do to it? It covers everything that is there? What is, what is the makeup of the sandwich? Isn't the discussion that has to be seen? You asked--
You would have to have a hearing, hearings.
I would love to have discussion with the group to make decision on how do you uphold it. I-- This, I, I cannot say there will be a meeting.
What the question is, have you, have you pressured them to have a meeting?
No, I haven't pressured them to have a meeting, not yet, not.
All right. Yes. Yeah, hold on.
Here, here, here's what we have. Here we have a group of communities--
Wait, wait, man.
--which I'm glad to see. If there is one thing I think that we've done as a group of people, council meetings Thursday, seven o'clock, sit there, show your concern for your community. I'm here, show your concern.
So by round of applause, how many folk will be at the meeting on Thursday? So by round of applause, how many folk will be at the meeting on Thursday? You've got one of the issues down the table.
The issue be on the table.
All right, so that's the question.
Good evening. I'm a grassroots community, whatever. And I go to city council meeting quite frequently. And I try to have my say about an issue that we've been fighting for since nineteen, since 2010. The rudeness, the bruntness, the name-calling that you will get when you go to the city council meeting is just implorable.
From who? From who? Who does the name-calling? Who's rude? Who's a brunt?
Well, if you want me to call some names.
No, just say names. Wait, wait, wait a minute. This is the Madison Show, so you can call names?
No, I'm not gonna call a name because I may.
Oh, now I wanna know.
Read the newspaper from yesterday, you'll see why I'm not calling names. But from the mayor right on down. Councilman Brown is the person that sits there and he tries to really bring some civility to this conversation. And never, never, I have been called a liar. I'm in the house of God, but I've been called, told that I'm full of whatever. So these are the kind of things I get from the mayor. He's got two letters sitting in my desk if his embossment did not put them in file thirteen. So it goes on and on and on and on. There is too much divide in the city of North Charleston. We need a congressional inquiry, like we would do for our military. We need to have the Justice Department look at the number of tickets that were given for non-offensive crimes. We need to look at the fact that you get stopped for no license on your bicycle. Okay? And then probably cause takes it another step further and they say that, well, do you have anything in your pocket? Well, if you said no, and then he goes a little bit further and he finds it, then you're gonna get tamed. So it goes on and on and on and on. Do you know that if you have, and that's illegal, but if you have a, you're not smoking it, you just got it in your pocket, of whatever, that you will pay $430? My special need brother, who is on a fixed income, had to pay $430. Now, whatever he does, I don't know and why he does it, but $430 from somebody who makes the minimum wage of $8.50 cents? Oh, come on now. And when I said to the judge, please have some leniency on us, he said, yeah, I've known Barry for a long time. He put it right on us, $430 from $8.30 an hour. Thank you.
Congressman, and I'm asking advisedly, and I'm just wondering, since this is being what we're experiencing here in North Charleston, Baltimore, I just read a piece Albuquerque has had multiple shootings of a homeless man was shot there. We're going out to Los Angeles to do a town hall. What about the possibility of some congressional forum? I don't think you can officially call them hearings, but maybe the Congressional Black Caucus going city to city and having these kinds of forums, just a thought.
Well, the Congressional Black Caucus could do that, except that you don't have the authority of the Congress. Any group within the Congress can go and do anything they ought to do. But if you're gonna have a hearing that is sanctioned by the Congress, that's another thing. We have a system in the House side. Of course, my party is not in control of the House or the Senate. And so if you're gonna have an official hearing, it has to come from the committee and we are not in charge. And therefore, anything that we do, we have to do on our own. And this is part of what I do. When you and I talked about this, I thought this would be a good forum for a hearing. And that's why I'm sitting here listening. But officially, it cannot be done unless the Speaker of the House and those who are in control, and the Democrats are not in control, and I'm a Democrat, they have to do it. I can't do it. I'm doing tonight what I can do.
All right, yes.
You are listening to Star 99.7, home of the Steve Harvey Morning Show, R and B and old school throughout today. Good Friday evening to you. I am Savannah. And hey, talking about Friday, tonight at 12:30 a.m., make sure you check out Comcast C2. Check out AC Fun Time Superstars with the Baby Boomers. And hey, if you check it out, guess what? You'll get a chance to see one of the Star 99.7 All-Stars. We're gonna be right there behind the scene doing our thing with AC Fun Time Superstars with the Baby Boomers this Friday night at 12:30 a.m. Check this out. If you wanna know about the sixties and seventies, do positive music, dance and inspiring, enriching, empowering the community. Check it out tonight. AC Fun Time Superstars with the Baby Boomers on Comcast C2, 12:30 a.m. Don't miss it. I am Savannah for your number one station. It is Star 99.7.
The young lady here was, and when I was talking, stand up, stand up. When he was talking about the role of the different people in leadership position politically, he sort of gave me a thumbs down. Why?
Everything that we're talking about tonight, we've been saying this fifty years now. Fifty years. And if you keep doing the same thing, saying the same thing, Einstein said you're crazy, stupid, whatever.
All right, all right, so what should people here do differently?
Okay, first about voting. We've been voting now for fifty years. I left my television set looking at Baltimore. We have a black president.
I've got, whoa, whoa, you're talking to a talk show host who does that every day. What, listen to my question. What should we do, what should we do that's different that we're not doing? What would you put on the table?
You have to show that you are smart. And to show that you are smart, fifty years ago, when Brown versus the Board of Education, we shut down our black school system and put our children in the hands of the KKK and we have left.
Man, I'm gonna start it, I'm gonna stop again. What should we do? Listen, listen to my camera. Well, if you understand it, and, no, we're not gonna keep going, only got two hours. No, go to, you know, go to the answer. What's the answer?
The power that we have is our children, the money that they bring into North Charleston. If you keep sending your children to school every day where they are shot in the back, just like we saw Walter Scott shot every day. Look at the statistics. Black schools are failing. The best schools in Charleston County are boycot-
And, and, and I'm gonna make this up. No, boycott, okay, boycott.
System, the public school system that we have control of. There are no black teachers since fifty years ago. Close the schools down, open those black churches. There's one on every corner. Breakfast, lunch, keep them out for a year. The Birmingham, it was the bus boycott.
I got you, now she answers. What's on your name?
Reverend John Paul Brown, pastor. Pastor AB Churchill. We are here because to keep the pressure on. One of the things that was said that we tried to bring back to this meeting is that videos does not bring conviction. They can charge them all they want. They see the beating, didn't do it in New York, didn't do it in Ferguson. The video is simply to help us, unless we keep this on. The city of North Charleston, I pastor in Charleston, I had two or three members that had twelve tickets within six months until we challenged that. That's in North Charleston that they got. North Charleston Police Department refused to put out a report of how many whites are arrested, how many blacks are arrested, and they skewed that number so you wouldn't know that these people who don't make but seven to eight dollars an hour is paying $500 at even fine in their own community and will not put out a report at all. This is a cross-section of not just North Charleston, but it affects every minority and Afro-American here because they keep doing it. We need an oversight committee that they have to answer to. SLED is just a puppy. SLED is made up of other enforcement agencies where these people come to the rent, they've worked in North Charleston, and then they make it to the top as a policeman and become a member of SLED and the report is excused and not written.
All right, yeah, how many, let me talk about the organizations that have come together, that should come together. So let's talk about two things. One, is there a coalition of organizations? Are they working together as well as they should? Or is there room for improvement? And what improvement, and I'm being kind. Look, I've talked to all of you, many of you have called my show. You've got one group going east, one group going west, one group going north, another group has left and gone to Baltimore. And as I've said to people, this is when the real, when the real work starts, when the cameras leave. Now, that's really when the hard work starts. I mean, you've got a councilman who stood up and he said, here's the deal. If you want it, this is what you have to do. So talk to me, let me start with you, Mr. Brown. And thank you for allowing us to be here in North Charleston and part of your organization. Just your thoughts for a moment, then I'll turn to your colleague from Charleston.
Thank you, thank you very much. You asked a question earlier about what should we do? What would be one of the significant things that we could do in the city of North Charleston in order to change things around? And that one significant thing is the fact that the number, we have forty-seven percent of minority representation in the state. Forty-seven percent in the city, okay? What we need to do is go department, by department, in the city of North Charleston and make sure, starting if you will, with the garbage department, the police department, and make sure that you have the representation reflected in the general community on each one of those boards and commissions in the city, okay? The police department, there's three hundred and forty-three police officers there. We only have eighteen percent representation. We have a city council in North Charleston that oversees the hiring and firing people on this police department. They announce the fire department as well, code enforcement as well. What we can do initially off the ground is make sure that you have forty-seven percent representation on the police department, and the fire department, and administration, and finance, and code enforcement, right on to the top.
Now, let me interrupt. That forty-seven stands out, that forty-seven percent. Do you have forty-seven percent voter turnout in North Charleston of the black people?
Unfortunately, no, we do not.
Then you have a problem then, don't you?
That's correct.
I mean, so, so, so do you think this, this, this situation will, like Ferguson, do you think it is heightening awareness now? Is there major voter registration going on? Do you think there will be voter registration? And what is the NAACP doing to assure that?
We have a voter registration going on as we speak, okay? It'll be going on until June, okay? We are united with the National Action Network. We're united with the Coalition, People United for Change in the Community, Black Lives Matter. The National Long Term Association is united with us. National Hospital Association, MFC, has been united with us. We have all collectively came to the table and had a discussion about the things that need to be changed in North Charleston, in the city. We have put those things forth on the table. Not only that, but we're going to make, make other recommendations and suggestions for the city of North Charleston to be done. Voting is significant. It's inevitable. If you have a voter registration card, you should vote. Because if you do not vote, you're just as guilty to that man that pulled the trigger on it, Mr. Scott. You're just as guilty. You have the power to change it. You have the votes to change it. So all you need to do is turn out on election day and put those kind of people in place.
Let me ask, and thank you for being with us, and I'll get right to you. You know, what, here's what I don't understand. We've got most of the organizations here, and quite a few, you know, from Black Lives Matter, NAACP, the Women Brex, you've got all kinds of folks represented. What I don't understand is what excuse is the mayor and other officials giving you? Not to me. This, 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 this not, you've got to help me put my, you know, my head around this. If I were mayor of North Charleston, and let me, oh, let me point out something for sake of, as my executive producer says, they all were invited. We invited, we invited the chief of police, we invited the mayor. They all were invited. Matter of fact, we wanted to hold this in city hall and were told it's not available. And that's why I thank Reverend Kennedy, where is Reverend Kennedy? Reverend Kennedy, thank you. And Reverend Kennedy, when we called, I'd never met Reverend, and I gotta tell you something, I've never met Reverend Kennedy and I called a few other churches. I won't mention any names. No, I, she can mess with, make it official, I ain't messing with the Lord. But he didn't, he didn't hesitate. He didn't hesitate. He said, the church is yours. And we have to thank him. What do you think is going on? Please give your name.
My name is Dot Scott. I'm the president of the Charleston Ranch at the NAACP and I'm a resident, forty-year resident of North Charleston. Actually was born here. I think if we would address the, one of the biggest thing that keeps us from moving forward in North Charleston is the fear of the mayor. Folks don't wanna say the fear of the mayor. Most of the folks are in position to make a difference. They are not, and they are guarded, alluded to the dog with the bone in the mouth. We've got too many of them with bone in their mouth. We're not gonna split up. We can talk about who, it's not only important who we elect and that we go, I mean, it's not just to elect black folks. You've got to elect people who are concerned about everybody. And we got plenty of people that is here often, of us trying to speak up, they will not speak up. I have to take my hat off because she was talking about the mayor calling a name. I'm the nut, he's calling me a nut, so, you know, I wear a crown.
So the mayor has called you a nut?
He's called me a nut publicly. And the sad thing about it is none of our people would even respond to that. That's not, not one of, in fact, one of our council people said, you don't have to apologize while the postcorporation said he should. But when you've got people that are afraid to speak, you're not gonna get any better. But I do say we have to vote, we must vote. And when we talk about only ten percent of the folks going to the poll in the mayor's race, we've got the problem. When the man can insult you and say, what are you gonna do, man, for your reelection? I'm gonna have a fish fry.
We wanted to make a comment just before the break. Yes, I'll come back up here. Apples in the barrels, there's those apples in the barrel. I mean, you just, anybody on the panel, your response to that, that would be anybody in the panel.
Let me just respond. As I started out my remarks tonight, if the evidence reveals that the second officer on the scene, and I'm sorry I'm mispronouncing his name, but Hammer Sham, if in fact Hammer Sham left out material information in the report, he is just as guilty as Officer Sledge. And we have to hold him accountable. Now, I will tell you, I've met with many of the members of the African-American law enforcement agencies and many of them feel like they're in a system of nepotism and political ties and they're afraid to vent, to stand up against this system. And so it's a, it's a problem that we have to seriously address. And there is legislation, there is legislation that was filed last summer on these very issues. And so this didn't just start in the aftermath of the shooting of Walter Scott. What the shooting helped us do is it galvanized support once the video came out. And now we have a bipartisan bill that I'm optimistic and hopeful that Representative Gilliard and Whipper and Mack and many others on the House are gonna pass and we're gonna pass one in the Senate. And I pray for the family of Walter Scott because we wanna make sure his, his legacy lives. And he did not die in vain.
All right, all right. The young lady up there caught my attention when she talked about the Freedom Summer School. And I got it- And I gotta tell you, I'm, I'd like to put that on the list of recommendations-
I think that'll be-
-that, that there should be, uh, now, there might, how many, how many of you are old enough to remember Freedom Summer Schools? You know, and, you weren't even born. That's like, that's like Fogan said, I was at the March on Washington, and he was 22 years old. Um, but Freedom Schools was, were where we-
That fits into the agenda perfectly, and it-
Okay, let me hear from you, sure.
It goes to something that I said earlier, it's not that hard to do.
Right.
It's not that costly, it's a good way for houses of faith to work together. But we have to go back to the mindset we had before somebody told us we overcame, uh, so that nobody will say, "Well, I can't have a Freedom School because the children might mess up my school, my church, uh, because I don't know if my insurance covers that, because we got fish dinner that day, chicken dinner that day." You know, we have to put our priorities straight. Other thing I wanted to say, and it's just a pastoral recommendation to the two North Charleston mayor-elect candidates who are here, I don't know how well you brothers know each other, but get to know each other, so that at some point in time, if it is quite obvious that one of you has a statistical advantage, the other of you is big enough to back away. So that the vote will not be split, so, let's just, just take that home with you. Pray.
All right. You know, Ashley Ober walked up to me when I was outside prepping, and, and she, uh, she said, she gave me a card and said she was with Boeing. And I, and I thought to myself, why, why would Boeing be here? And then, it didn't take me long, I'm not the sharpest pencil in the pack, but, you know, you, you're talking about a major international corporation, and when these things happen, we act as if they're not part of our community. They are very much part of our, our community. So of all the things that you've heard, give me your response, and, and what should be the, 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 corporations, there used to be a thing, I remember it called corporate citizenship. I don't even know if that exists anymore, you tell me, but that used to be a, yeah, now corporation for people. And since they're people, then Boeing could get shot in the back. So, people, you know, um, but your, your response? And I don't think it's your trouble with Boeing, but you're here, going.
So a couple of things about that. Um, I also have Siobhan Fuller here with me. She is one of our lead attorneys at Boeing South Carolina. Um, so she might say if you were a minute too, but I think to your point, I was just sitting here thinking, it's not always just a business community and a religious community, it's one community. And so the opportunity for us to be here and, and listen to the dialogue, be a part of the dialogue, and I think most importantly, you know, I work with a bunch of engineers who like to have a checklist of things, so the recommendations, I think, is extraordinarily important too. So I, I would just say the opportunity to be here and participate is, is a huge part of the global corporate citizen that we wanna be.
You know what I'm thinking, and again, this is just how I think. If, like, who's the number-one Boeing executive in Charlotte?
Charleston?
Charleston, where am I? I'm in South Carolina, right? You know, North Charleston, who is the, but I, no, but I mean, and, and they say, who's the number-one top executive?
Beverly Wise.
Beverly Wise, all right, Beverly Wise. If Beverly Wise called the mayor and said, oh, I almost cursed up there. Like, like the president said yesterday, you gotta bucket this, you know? Um, meet with these people. Wouldn't, don't you think that that would go a long way with a number of corporate citizens? I'm not getting you to respond. You don't have to respond to that. You don't have to respond to that. That's my response. And I think this goes back to the point you were making, Emma, is that, you know, too often it's, we, we, we sometimes are under, you hear me say this all the time, black folk are undervalued, underestimated, and marginalized. Man, if corporate America said to the mayor, "What do you mean, you're not gonna meet with these folks? They work for me. They work in my plan." Meet with them, because I know he has dinner with them, I know they go to fundraisers. So wouldn't, wouldn't that go a long way? Now, you're a council, you wanna, you wanna respond to it? Go on, sister, talk. What's your name?
My name is Siobhan Fuller.
All right.
I'm senior counsel for Labor and Employment.
All right.
And I'm also from New York City, Brooklyn. Um, not from here, but I, the same issues occur, as you know, in New York, Brooklyn.
Brooklyn was, we saw that on tape too.
Exactly. Um, so again, you know, we, nobody made us come here today.
Right.
Let me just say that, okay? We came here because we certainly have met some people here in the room, we worked some issues out with people here in the room, right, Dot? And we did it because it meant something to us. And one of the things that's important for us, and like, somebody like me to be in the position I'm in, is that, listen, today, I called, um, for my son in college, and he's obviously a young black man, right, at the University of Virginia, and I called to, to see if we could get in contact with him, because he hadn't called us back in a few days. You know how parents do. But I called the university security, and this is what I said. My son is not on drugs, my son is not mentally ill, my son is not, not a violent. Knock on his door, but do not hurt my child. The point is, the point is, these issues affect all of us, every single one of us.
Jim Clyburn taught me, y'all know he was a history teacher before he was the, the power in Congress, but it seems that, I remember, I think he said this a long time ago, somebody asked, "What's the difference between a moment and a movement?" One word. Sacrifice. Every person in the civil rights movement sacrificed something. So that's why I stopped you. When I asked you, "Did you call the VP and ask the VP?", he said, "No, no, no, no." Well, excuse me. Why not? Because I can do that, fine. But what I'm saying is, is the sacrifice, it's just like that smattering of applause that I heard when, when the councilman said, "Show, come to the meeting." And there was that, because it may require sacrifice. Y'all may have to sacrifice that. If it was, I hope it's not on a Thursday, because Scandor comes on, but y'all may have to sacrifice. Uh, go ahead, I mean, let me get your, let me get your, your thoughts here, and again, thank you for opening this church. Not everybody opened the church, though. I was, I just love the name Reverend Dr. Robert E. Kennedy. My mother did that to me. She did you justice, go ahead. You know, as we gather here tonight, something that's on my mind is, are we willing to network together beyond tonight? Gathered tonight, it occurred because of calls that were made, folk networking together. My question is, after tonight's over, are we gonna go back in our communities and get with our faith groups and not come out until something like this happens again? That's the topic. It's one thing to come out in grandstanding when the cameras are rolling, but next month, when there's a meeting at City Hall, who will be there? It's normally the same faces over and over again. So I challenge everyone here tonight, let's suppose, Joe, you come back in six months, and we have another meeting, and as Ashley said, we've got a checklist, and we go down the checklist to see if we've done what we said we were gonna do, or if we just came here and talked. You put a checklist to get, you've got a checklist here, legislative checklist, uh, Congressman Clyburn, go ahead, you've got a federal checklist, you've got a religious checklist. I mean, I love what he said about, about Summer, about the Freedom Summer School. He, I mean, the, the Reverend Darby said, it, it, Reverend Darby is absolutely right. All it is is saying, "Here's my church basement, teach me."
This is being done. Youth and elders, exchange of knowledge, along with food, fun, and entertainment. For more information, call 843-735-2189.
843-735-2189. Youth and elderly's working together, exchange of knowledge. Call again, 843-735-2189. Food, family, and fun.
Be there.